Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation, appropriate meeting notice.
It was noticed on Friday, February 16th. Agenda's posted at the post office by grants and law.
Counsel, acceptance of the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personal appearances, anything, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight, please state your name and address.
My name is Dane Peterson. I live at 102 Blanchard Street. I'm having trouble with the snow parking. I have too many vehicles in my driveway, it's very small, so I almost always end up with a ticket. So I don't know what to do, if there could be any permissions that you could find out or something like that, if you were registered, so you could say, okay, if you have an extra vehicle, as long as we know where it's gonna be there, something to let me know.
Well, we can't do anything tonight because it's not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it at all, but we could send that to a committee for a discussion, and that would probably be public works to start with. Okay? If that's something that...
If you're able to hang around, give me your name and number, we can exchange numbers, and I will contact you, and we'll see about when we get that on an agenda for public works. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from February 5th.
I'll make that a motion to approve the February 5th council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Committee reports. Finance, Mark.
Making a motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $2,240,086.91.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no licenses, I'll move on to three. Motion to approve a disallowance of claims for Best Realty.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Gary from Best Realty. I would like to just kind of lay out a picture of kind of what happened that day and the weeks leading up to that. August 10th, I made a phone call to Randy Orin and talked to him that there was a sinkhole in the middle of the road. It was a heavy rain. I think we got a little over two inches that day, and the water spiraling down the middle of the road. There was no backup at all at that point, anywhere beyond the road. And Randy immediately sent somebody out. I think he was there in probably five minutes. Somebody came by, placed a cone on that immediately. Probably 10 minutes after that, the cone was picked back up, and that was left there and left as a sinkhole that, I mean, we called initially because it was a public concern, but eventually on the 17th of August, when it rained, I think it was three and a half to four inches, so about inch more than previously, but there was no backup at all. The fabric was still there. We had massive backup into our office, about $25,000 in damages, and we're just making this claim, I mean, they denied our claim based on an act of God, when really, I mean, if you look at the factors, the storm sewer was completely repaired, it wasn't just a sinkhole. I was told that the road was being repaired, and since they're doing that, they might as well do the storm sewer too. Based on that fact, I'm wondering why there's still, I bet you I can count 100 sinkholes and 100-foot distance on that road. So if there's a true concern about sinkholes, why was only one sinkhole addressed? My other concern is, they said it was an act of God, that the storm sewer was capable of handling that amount of rain. If that was the case, I was approached by Tom, asking if they could replace part of our sidewalk with grass to help slow down the onslaught down onto the storm sewer. And if that was also the case, why was there only two storm sewer grates at the time and now it's four? So Mike, I'm just curious why, is, what was there was able to handle what happened? Why is it a completely larger system now?
So what's our process? As far as discussion, or...
You can have a discussion on the appropriateness of the claim.
Okay.
If you have questions for city staff, you can ask questions for city staff. The issue on tonight's agenda is the proposed claim, or the request for a compensation. The recommendation, of course, from the insurers to deny it. If the claim is denied, that starts a clock. They have a period of time to make a claim, put us on notice, they've done that. If we deny it, that starts a clock for actually filing an action against the municipality.
So, if Best Realty, do they have a recourse to this? I mean, can they, what would their next step be?
If we were to deny the claim tonight, their next step, if they chose, would be pursue legal action by filing an actual complaint against the city.
Okay.
That'd be the next step.
Wasn't there already a claim, though, Bill?
The notice of claim and notice of injury is a precursor to actually filing an action in circuit court. So they've done that. They've done what they need to do. They put us on notice in a timely fashion. We've investigated the claim and the insurance company's recommended denial.
I think, Kyle, I think you had a kind of a question, did you not, about why were four grates put in, or...
Yeah, so what was there prior? It was just one grate on each side. I mean, it's not the first time it's happened. I bet you we've called in probably six or seven times in the last couple of years, saying, they've been clogged numerous times, it's backed up numerous times, it was never so bad to where it caused this much of damage. We've had floods before where it cost three, $4,000, and we just went ahead and paid it. But this one, we have flood insurance down there. We went that route, and they told us that what we had in insurance, through flood insurance, isn't covered on storm sewer backups. I mean, they specifically labeled it a storm sewer backup. We had an insurance agent come out there and look. We've had numerous cleaning companies, the same cleaning company every single time, come out there and look, and he's been there throughout every time it's flooded, so. I mean, we have more than enough people that were there that night. We probably had 15 people pumping out our basement from 10 o'clock at night till 2:00 in the morning. And the water was so great at that road, that we had a, the reason we first found out about it was his brother-in-law was driving through, and his car stalled because there was so much water. He called him for a ride home, and luckily, he came down, saw the amount of water. We were down there in five minutes pumping it out. If we wouldn't have caught it, I bet you we would have had probably close to three feet of water down there. Some areas, we had two feet, some areas, we had a foot. But the claim that we made was some lost materials from the renters that we have in our office, but Best Realty made zero claim on any lost furniture, any lost anything. We strictly are making a claim to get our tenant's stuff back and the repairs done.
I guess my question then would be, and I don't know who this goes to, if it's to Tom or to Randy, okay. So would you say there was additional work that was done in the street to help prevent this from occurring again? Or I'm just trying to understand, based on what he said, and...
The grate that was taken out was probably as long as this table, if not half the size. So we added two inlet on both sides of the street to replace that capacity.
So one large grate was replaced with four, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Because...
Better, you wanted inlet on both sides of the street?
Yes.
Which would help to prevent that from happening. We assume, we don't know for sure, right?
Correct.
I mean...
I have one more concern. The thing that, when I talked to the insurance guy, when he told me that they were disallowing the claim, he told me that this repair couldn't be, I asked why it wasn't done earlier. We've had, like I said, we've had numerous times where we've had a little bit of water down there. Why wasn't this done earlier? And he was told, he told me that the city had discretionary funds for repairs as such. If that's the case, why two days after the flood was that ripped up? I mean, they made an immediate concern to fix it this time. As soon as I said, as soon as the words "claim" came out, it was like that, people were there bussing it up.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think anytime there's gonna be a street repaired, if the sewer is old, that's the time that we do it, right?
Yes.
If it's not something planned, because if the work was gonna be...
This repair really had nothing to do with the storm sewer. There was a hole in the street.
Okay.
And because that hole kept growing, and there was no way to really fix that without damaging more the storm sewer underneath, it was time to do it all.
Seems to me, I recall us discussing, you guys fixing that street before this actually happened, because we were discussing it here prior to the actual flooding, correct?
We patched the hole, yes, but it was to the point where that was only a temporary patch, and we didn't know how long that was gonna last.
My question back to that is, if you're doing a fix like that, I mean, I don't know the exact cost, I would assume the cost for something like this was around $80,000 to $100,000, but my guess would be, I mean, if you're gonna do a fix for a single pothole, I bet you I can go out there and find a dozen potholes within 100 feet that are three times the size of the one that was there.
This one's different.
My question is, why, if we're fixing one pothole, and you're gonna spend that much money on that one pothole, why are the rest not being addressed?
It's not a pothole, it was an actual hole in the street that went right into the storm sewer. That is not a pipe, it was a built-up cavity that went the whole width of the street.
But if there's a hole in the storm sewer, would that not be the definition of defective?
No. The water was still flowing through it, just like it did when Kevin removed the grates and the fabric. All the water rushed away.
But under the, hey, that flooded, water was clearly bubbling up from that hole. So if that hole wasn't there, where does that water go?
It was going to the creek.
That's exactly my point. It was going to the creek, but there's a hole, that water was physically coming up all the way.
And it went off, just like some of our storm sewers blow the covers off the manhole. There's pressure, so it comes up the weakest back.
My, I have one more question, is the system that was put in place any larger than what had been there?
I wouldn't say as larger, it's...
Is it able to handle more water?
Yes. Or the same.
I would just remind counsel that while these are factors that we consider routinely when deciding what to do with a street repair, rebuild, what have you, in terms of the claim, municipalities have immunity for discretionary acts. We are liable for the acts that are ministerial, meaning they have to be done in a particular fashion. There's only one way that they can be done. If there's discretion in terms of when a repair is made, if a repair is made, size of a sewer, et cetera, the law affords us a degree of immunity, and that is part of the reason that, though the decision or the letter is couched in terms of act of God, the insurance company correctly notes that we do have immunity, and that is the basis for the recommendation that we make at denial of this claim, simply because we don't, under law, have liability.
And then, one last thing to note is, the flood happened on the 17th into the 18th, I think it was around like 10 o'clock at night on the 17th into 2:00 on the 18th. 8:00 in the morning on the 19th, there was the whole sidewalk, and everything was busted up. Everything around where the water enters into the storm sewer was completely busted up, and that hole didn't get addressed for two more months after that. So why was all of that busted up immediately and repaired, and then the hole wasn't addressed for two more months? If that was such a concern, I feel like it would have been handled immediately.
The hole was patched, as soon as we got the material, the, all the excavating that was done was exploratory, to find out what was going on.
So on August, it was on August 19th when that sidewalk was busted up. January 24th is the date that the hole was completely fixed. So it took that long to fix the reason that they were fixing it, but yet, only one day to fix where the storm, where the water enters the storm sewer. So that, to me, would say, if you're fixing the area around the storm sewer, one day after the flood, I feel like that would be something you're addressing.
Tell me the date again?
January 24th was the date that the road was completed, and...
No. November.
All right, even if it was November 24th, I had January written down, but if it was November, it still took three months to address the reason the storm sewer was fixed, but only one day to address the area where the water enters the storm sewer. I have a picture that I have a date, a timestamp written on it, on August 19th, that that whole area was busted up.
And you were exploring to determine what was going on?
Yes, and planning, and engineers got involved, and bidding process, and...
That all takes time for a city.
No, I understand, I just feel like the way it was rushed one day after the flood had occurred, that that was busted up where the water enters the storm sewer, just goes to show something of importance of where that area was busted up. Because that was the first area that was addressed.
That was the access to the driveway and the sidewalk.
I mean, I'd be happy to share a picture, and you can see from the picture, the whole curb is completely crumbled, the whole area is just busted up, and it's just, I mean, you can see the area around the storm sewer is completely gravelled, there's no blacktop, anything here, it's all gravel around it.
Right, and again, I think Tom stated he did that to try to see what the issue was immediately.
No, but prior, even not the area busted up, the area around the road is completely corroded around the entrance, I mean, there's gravel in it, there's gravel around it, there's, I mean, there's a reason it backed up, and there's a reason that that was the first area that was addressed.
I would also caution the counsel that actions of any entity, including municipalities, taken to potentially remedy a situation are generally not deemed admissions of guilt, otherwise nothing would ever get done. So if the action of addressing it, investigating it, occurred after, it's really the actions that occurred prior to the event that are what we need to consider in terms of whether or not there's liability.
And on that note, I would like to call a question, because I think as the attorney spoke, you know, and also with what the letter says here from our insurance companies, basically stating, we have immunity to this situation, and then, in order for Best Realty to go ahead and make a claim to us, we have to go forward with our end of the deal here and deny the claim. So I call the question.
I would be happy to answer any questions anyone else had, if there's any questions I can't answer, and we have retained an attorney if this doesn't, I mean, for a small business in Edgerton, we've lost $26,000 on one claim. That's not even counting the furniture we lost, that's not counting anything in our basement that had two feet of standing water in it. We made zero claim on any furniture, which we told it was close to $10,000. We made zero claim on that. We're making a claim to pay back what we have already forfeited in repairs. Simple drywall fix, new carpet, trim. I mean, we don't want to drag it on any longer than you guys do, but if this is disallowed, we have absolutely no choice but to have our attorney proceed.
And I believe that's, the 120 days process would start then?
They'd have 180.
He's already on all the paperwork, he's ready to go, just waiting after tonight.
Our insurance company's turning it down, so that would put the burden on the taxpayers if something different was done here, wouldn't it?
We would be, as taxpayers, picking up, the insurance company is indicating there's no liability, and they would not provide coverage, that is correct.
And, hold up person, Wellness wants the question called, so, roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Dane.
McIntyre?
Abstain.
Send me the total?
Well, that's...
Two abstentions.
Abstentions, uh...
One, no.
I guess, as no, so...
Yes. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I think we're still on finance.
We are.
So was that, that was the vote, that was the actual vote, then?
Correct.
Okay.
That was the vote to abstain the, oh, I see, okay, for the disallowance of the claim, thank you, okay. We don't vote on...
All right, so I'm moving on to number four. Motion to approve bids for the police station countertop from C. Wurzer in the amount of $1,600.
How much?
No.
What was that? It was $1,600 over what the original?
No, $6,000, wasn't it?
$680, I believe.
Yeah.
That it was $1,600 over from contingency fund.
We have $5,000 already budgeted.
Right, I got you, that's right, my math is wrong. In the amount of $6,680.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Who was the second?
I did.
And does that include the overage coming along? Contingency.
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion? No. Hearing none, roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to declare four to six police department pilot cabinets as surplus.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wellness?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have for finance.
Thank you. Anything from the utilities?
Yeah, we met last Monday, and it was a pretty quick meeting, but we did, we purchased a Bobcat Skidsters for the fire district, which they need very badly.
That's it? Thanks. Fire district?
Audit is going on at the fire district, so I'm working with SEPT on providing information as well as copies of minutes, meeting minutes, et cetera. The fire department has a brand-new ambulance, the, I know it, it's beautiful. The Edgerton reporter is doing a story on it, I don't know if it's gonna be in the next paper, or whenever, okay. So I wanted to bring it up, so you guys knew about it before, in case the article is written before our next meeting. But I don't want to talk too much about it, because I'd like Chief Pickering to say a little bit about it, and he's not here this evening, which is a good segue into my next comment about the fire department, is, we will be, I've worked with Ramona and Cindy, we will have the fire department update on the first meeting of the month going forward. So Chief Pickering is able to be at the meetings to provide a report, so I can give a high level, that's great, but Chief Pickering does a really good job with giving more detailed information if it comes to dollars or numbers, and I just, I think it's, it's good to have our chief be present and give reports. It says a little bit more about what's going on at the department, and it's running very, very well. So that's it from the, from fire.
Thank you. Public safety?
Yeah, we met at 6:15, discussed three, four items, and one's on the item number two, but before we get to that, we did make a motion to discuss and consider prescription drug box relocation. Currently, it's on the inside, you gotta go from the outside, I mean, you actually gotta come in to do it now, you can go 24/7, is it, Tom? We're gonna try to get it on the outside?
Once it's moved outside, there'll be access 24/7.
Yeah, so that's kind of a, other municipalities do that, I get, so we're just following protocol with other municipalities doing that, and your group is part of allocation of some monies and procedures to get that going.
Will that be on the outside of the police department, right in front there, or...
Right, you know, with two big pots out by the entrance? It'd be about a corner of the building.
Got it, but...
Still have to be down there.
Won't be back in the alley or anything like that, just checking.
If you drive up there, it'll be...
Okay.
And I'll make a motion for item number two, to consider introducing and approving the first reading of City of Edgerton ordinance 18-01, to repeal and replace section 16.46, regulating social hosting.
Second.
Discussion?
We do have some people in the audience that do, do you want me to talk about that? Or is it, you're fine? If you need any update, Chris, Mayor, or...
I meet with them all the time.
So if I could ask a quick question, so this is to repeal what, this was not, how do I want to say it, so it didn't pass through?
We adopted a code about a year ago, and if you recall, it was because there was a case that the, I think it was the Supreme Court had decided that...
Yep.
Called it the question, social host ordinance, and so we crafted an ordinance that was narrowly tailored to answer that. The state, surprisingly enough, actually took action and corrected the state statutes, which is the reference in the ordinance that is 125.07. One could ask, well, why don't we simply leave ours in place, since it is, was crafted in a fashion to address our concerns? The reason we're not is because elsewhere in the statutes, it says that any ordinance, alcohol-related ordinance must be strict, that is adopted by municipalities, must be adapted in strict conformity with the state statutes, and we include intoxicants, a definition of intoxicants, which is broader than is in the state statutes. The chief was concerned that if we left it as is, his ability to write either a municipal citation or a state citation would be compromised, so that he could refer directly to circuit court as opposed to municipal court, and that's the real reason that we're doing this.
Okay.
I, my impression, or my personal opinion, is that the state needs to go a little bit farther and adopt a definition of intoxicants similar to the one we have.
Right.
To that extent, we're ahead of the curve, but to be in strict conformity, we're, at this point, we're beyond it, and we probably should adopt as proposed tonight.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else? Roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
No.
Olson?
Um, yes.
Wellness?
No.
Chris.
Four, two.
No tiebreaker.
Passes. I, this does have to come back for a second reading, in two weeks, two weeks? Yeah.
First Monday in March.
Next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton resolution 0518, final resolution, declaring the city's council's intentions for the 2017 sidewalk project to exercise special assessment police powers in section 660703, Wisconsin statute, should be 2018? Or is it the ones that were marked in 2017? Is that why that's...
2017 sidewalk project? So, yes.
Where it says 2018, that goes 2017, then?
Are you talking about the name, 2017 sidewalk project? That's correct, it's 2017, because it is the 2017 sidewalk project?
I believe it's under, I have number one where it says 2018 sidewalk project.
Item number one.
On the actual resolution, it says 2018.
It's a 2018 ordinance or resolution, but the project is the 2017 project? I'm confused, is that what you're...
I have number one, it says 2018.
Number one, it says 2018, in the actual document.
I was on the wrong, wrong page.
Yeah, the heading is, the heading is correct.
These are for next year. These were for next year, but it's the ones that we did this year or last year.
There is a correction. You here got one.
Okay, so that should be two thousand and seventeen?
Of the actual resolution, yes.
That's what I brought up. Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll make a motion.
Want to start reading them? Do you want to choose?
I'll second the motion.
Modified?
It's modified. Yes, of course.
Any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Guy?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are all the persons and staff reports. The last meeting, I neglected to mention that we lost one of our retired police officers and I listed off all the other people we lost since our previous council member, council meeting in January. Bill Merkel was retired here mid-nineties, thirty years, no, twenty years.
Retired ninety.
Okay, twenty. Um, had some dealings with him way back in, way back in the younger days, but not bad. He actually worked on a school project with me and one other guy back in early seventies. Um, like I said, forgot to mention that and condolences to their family, his family and. And the other thing is there's booths up here, so there is an election here tomorrow. So come on down and vote if you live in town here.
Yeah, I knew Bill Merkel myself probably since the early seventies also. He was a fine gentleman and a really good police officer for the city. He was well-known around the city. He was almost like the Andy Griffith type guy in Mayberry. He was just all over the place. He was quite a remarkable person and I remember him well too. He was a, looked to be a pretty good old age. Was it ninety, Chris?
Yeah.
So anyways, um, I agree with you too. There's a lot of sadness in the city over the last couple of weeks, so thanks for reporting on that. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I proposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.